Is this just from mine?
Okay.
Your...
The top doesn't work.
Yeah, we have a sick in a... Good afternoon, welcome to the March meeting of the Open Space Advisory Board. And I guess we'll get started. Time limits for information presentations. There's a 15-minute time limit for presentations with additional time granted at the discretion of the providing officer. This limitation is applicable only to the presentation itself and does not include discussion and action elements of an item. Call to the public, items not listed on the agenda. Members of the public will be allowed three minutes to present with additional time granted at the discretion of the presiding officer. Do we have anyone signed up for call to the public?
Yes, we have one member.
Okay, Bob Keier. I think it's great that the council passed conservation easement for Lost Dog Trail, and hopefully the city will be working on that quickly to actually see it happen. Just to remind you that Nap Canyon was purchased also with open space funds, and I shouldn't say also, was purchased with open space funds. It's on the, up in northeast side of town, and 626 acres. And it would be great if the city, if the city would proceed in designating that a conservation easement also. I know there's people within the city looking at that, and I know there's people on this board concerned about that, but I hope it's a quicker process than it was with Lost Dog Trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And that's it for call to the public? Okay. Okay, I don't think anybody seems to want to speak. Okay, let's go on to the regular agenda. Item number one, discussion and action changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we're requesting that item number four, the update on council action and staff recommendations for Lost Dog Trail be moved to the front of the agenda.
Okay, so after the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? So we don't need a...
Motion.
We need a motion.
Yeah.
So I entertain a motion in a second to move item four to after item two.
I still won't. Is that second?
Okay, if a motion is second to move that item, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, got it done. Okay, any other changes?
No.
Okay. Item two, approval of the minutes from the February 12th meeting. I know we've had them ahead of time, but whatever time y'all need, let me know, and then I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the minutes from last month.
Time motion to approve?
Hi, can we review?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, got that done. Okay, let's go to what was listed as item four. Information discussion and update on council action and staff recommendations made at the council meeting on October 29th regarding the approximately 1,000 acres of land owned by the city of El Paso and northwest El Paso, including Lost Dog Trail.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Kevin Smith with Planning Inspections. Thank you for letting me come to you today and give you this update. So on February 18th, just a few weeks ago, city council made the motion to direct staff to basically take the steps necessary to create a conservation easement on the formerly TERS 12, the Lost Dog Trail area. They did indicate that the ballot initiative was previously adhered to by the steps taken by the city in utilizing the 10% open space, the stormwater open space funds, as well as to dissolve TERS 12. So that met the ballot initiative. This is something council wanted to do above and beyond that. So staff right now will be working on creating a conservation easement over this, this amount of land. So that's just a quick update. Wanted to make sure you all had the, this. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Are they actually working on it?
Yep, yeah. That has been transferred to another department who manages the real estate functions for the city.
So the real estate department is...
Well, capital improvement department, yeah.
Questions, anybody else? Any timetable for moving this forward?
I don't, I don't want to speak for them. Obviously, they have to go through the process. This is something that hasn't been done too often involving a municipality, so we're just gonna have to work through that. But suffice it to say, council gave us the direction, and we are going to be moving forward for, for creating that conservation easement over, over this land.
Okay.
So I don't have a timeline to give unto you.
Is there a contact in capital improvement?
The person who manages it is Alex Hoffman.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if he'd be the appropriate staff.
Okay. But he could direct this or something.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I would just say if there's anything that we can do to facilitate the process, just to let us know.
I think it's just a matter of staff working through it and working with our legal team to go through the process, but we appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, then let's go back to item three. Information and discussion, El Paso Water Utilities Quarterly Financial Report on the 10% annual drainage fee, revenue and expenses.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Rosio Varada with El Paso Water. Are we presenting the, the fourth quarter for, from December through February for the financial report on 10% annual drainage utility fee revenue? So some background on our program is the 2007 ordinance established municipal drainage utility system for the collection, management, and control of stormwater runoff to protect health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of El Paso. This ordinance requires a master stormwater management plan, which was approved and prepared by city council in 2009. This ordinance also required an annual stormwater capital improvement plan, which will include the use of the maintenance of arroyos and other natural drainage systems to manage stormwater. Annual capital required to identify stormwater infrastructure projects which have the potential dual purpose of stormwater management and preservation of the city's open space, arroyos, greenways, and wilderness areas in the natural state. 10% of the system's annual drainage utility fee revenue shall be allocated for such green projects. And here we have our quarterly report. So the balance of the fund as of November 30, 2019, it's $3,536,831. In this quarter, the 10% collected was $594,445. The interest for the quarter was $18,004. The expenses for the quarter were the principal interest of $36,533, and also we have an expense of an appraisal for $1,000. And these totals are for $37,533 for the expenses of this quarter. We also are working on the future appropriated obligations for the Hunter Royal 1A, so we're receiving this amounts of $655,704. So that leaves us with the balance of $3,456,053. This is our cash flow slide. It's from December through February. Just be aware that February is estimated, but it's very close. And here with our stormwater priority list. So we have Hunter Royal 1A, which Hunt is making final revisions to the design. It's, it's my understanding that they almost completed with the revisions. Canterbury Float Pad, we are still coordinating with the property owner. We have made the appraisal, and we already sent an offer to the, to the property of the, the owner property. Avi Spa Canyon, it's, we're working on the property to be appraised, and we're still in communication with the property owner, and it's my understanding too that this, I guess this project was taken to their, to the board meeting for approval. So we should be expecting an answer pretty soon. Cement Lake, it's, we have an update on this one. So Tex Dot is done with the, with the new survey on the property. So now it's time for El Paso Water and Tex Dot to, to meet to get the final details for the transfer. And for this, with this, I conclude my presentation, and I'll happy to answer any questions you may have.
Where is this Canterbury Flow Pad?
Where is it located?
Where is it?
It's by, it's on the west side, by Stanton, from the west side of Canterbury. It's where the scent...
It's in the Mission Hills area.
Yes.
Canterbury has a, there's a section...
It's a month's night.
...has that a, a big drainage canal basically down the middle of the street, and the property is slightly uphill from there.
Yeah, we're trying to make communication with the owner. We haven't been successful on this, but we're trying to contact him. We already sent the offer letter for, to purchase that piece of property.
Okay.
And Avi Spa, is there a timeline on...
You know what, right now it's...
It depends on their board?
Yeah, right now it's on, on some damage on Hunt. They're reviewing the, I guess, that were recommendation, so it's up to them right now.
Okay.
But I know that we should have something very soon.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's it for that item, and...
We have...
Oh, that's right, second part.
We have an update on the Arroyo 1A.
Okay.
And Yasena Castro is with the Stormwater Division, so she will have more detail on this, on this purchase, on this property.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. My name's Yasena Castro with Stormwater, El Paso Water, Stormwater. So here is a brief update on Arroyo 1A, but I'd like to start off with, with a video. It's about 13 minutes long. I won't play the whole thing, but I'll play a little bit, and then I'll skip to a couple other parts where, that I feel are important for y'all to see. Okay, so I just wanted you to see that before I start this. So this is located in northwest El Paso, specifically south and west of Trans Mountain. So we have the Hunter Arroyo 1A and Arroyo 1. Arroyo 1A is south, Arroyo 1 is north. Arroyo 1A falls into the existing High Ridge Channel, and Arroyo 1 falls into the Bear Ridge Channel. So with a little bit of background, that, the video you saw is from a storm event on July 10th in 2015. It was a short duration, but we got, we got hit really hard, and that's what came of it. Of course, if y'all were here in 2006 for the 2006 storm, we had major damage then as well. So what came of that is we realized there's definitely issues with our existing stormwater infrastructure in that area. Our current peak flows exceed the capacities of the two channels. Not, as well as the sediment debris that comes off the mountains into the channels is extremely high. The amount is high, and it blocks the culverts, not allowing water to flow through how it should. So, and these photos are taken off that video, but I felt the video was a little more powerful. So after that happened in 2015, we hired a consultant to go ahead and do a study in this area, specifically on Arroyo 1 and 1A and the channels. Of course, we knew the velocities were extremely high. We knew that the debris was extremely, in large amounts, coming down. And so what came of that report is that basically our channels are undersized, so in order to size them to the correct, adequately, we would need to acquire more right-of-way, and we would have to increase the size of culverts. Well, that makes it difficult when you already have existing infrastructure all around it, and you don't have right-of-way to acquire. So the other thing that came of it is we can do improvements upstream of it to capture the debris and to reduce the velocities into the channels. So that's, that's what we went with. We entered into an agreement with Hunt Communities Holding with Arroyo 1A, because Arroyo 1A was expected to have a much greater cost. It has a much greater footprint on the infrastructure that needs to be done. So, and why we went into the agreement is because El Paso Water realized that this private property had drainage issues that actually affected properties outside of, of that boundary. So, and, and we needed to protect the residents downstream of it, so, so hence we entered into this agreement. And it's, it's, Hunt will be, is designing and constructing it, and then we'll be purchasing it once, once it's all been improved. And currently, it's, like Rosio said, we're, we're finalizing, we finalized design. We're getting ready to send a letter to Hunt that we've, we're in agreement and approve, and then as we move along, we'll be updating the agreement. Last year, I presented to you all our Arroyo 1 stormwater basin design. We're 95% complete. We're on hold right now just because we don't have funding for construction until the next fiscal year, but I do understand there's new board members, so I wanted to include this slide in there just so y'all know what we have coming in Arroyo 1. And it's a smaller footprint. We have 1,500 linear feet that is going to be disturbed. We have seven basins that are, that are designed in a step pattern of 200 feet long and four feet deep each. And so we have connectivity to get people from, from the residence area to the state park. And for the proposed design for Arroyo 1A, it's going to be three large ponds with a culvert system that's going to connect the three ponds together, and, and of course, that's going to connect to the existing High Ridge Channel. And will also, it also includes connectivity into the state park. And that concludes the presentation. So if y'all have any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
For the Arroyo 1, the seven-stepped basins that you were talking about, that's to slow down the, the velocity of the water, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And I'm just wondering, when, when these designs are being implemented, what is the consideration to natural, to the natural space around it, such as the animals and stuff?
Okay, so...
Just wondering.
That is a high concern for us. So when I presented last year on Arroyo 1, I did make a commitment to assure that we did not go out of our footprint. We do, we have limits for the contractor, and that's going to be huge on El Paso Water to make sure we abide by that, and we have the contractor abide by that, because we actually made that promise to you all last year.
And then the three ponds on Arroyo, this would be 1A, correct?
Yes.
Where exactly will they be in relation to the duration of the Arroyo? At the top?
So we'll start with the pond at the top. Let me see if I can... So Arroyo 1A is that whole area in between Ornado Middle School? In between Ornado Middle School and then the, the residence, just north of it, right? So it's going to start almost to where Nancy, is it, I'm sorry. Nancy with CSA is here. She's, she designed it, but I just want to make sure I'm not saying...
Yeah, it's not going to start where you made the red mark, right?
No, no, it's not. It's not. So the, so the green boundary on the right side, that's where the state park begins. Okay. And it's going to start midway? Okay, a little, I think, but... Okay, so it's about midway to two-thirds of the way up? Or a third of the way west of the state park? Does it?
So are you...
Oh, let me, you know what, sorry. Forgot I had a mouse.
You need a laser pointer or something like that?
Okay, so tell me, left?
About right, no, right, where that street is. Right there.
Right there. Oh, that's right, yes, because we have a, there's a, there's a trail right here.
Yeah, that's where the, that's the trailhead.
There's an existing, there's an existing trail right here, right?
Yeah, there's a, it runs right along the back of those properties.
Right.
So we're keeping that.
So it'll run from about here all the way to where it connects to the existing High Ridge Channel.
Okay.
And you will have access to get to the state park.
So, but the ponds will be stepped, I guess, like top, middle, and bottom, pretty much?
Yes. So it'll be similar to what you saw on, on, oh. On this one, except they're ponds. These, these are much smaller.
So in the ponds, are you retaining water in that situation where this one is more just to slow it down?
Yes, we are actually, the ponds are going to act as detention ponds. They'll, there is some retention, so the outfall pipe is a little higher, so we are detaining some water, but the pipe is, the main function is to slow water down. There is some retention. The other main function is to remove the debris coming off the mountain. So there is going to be access for El Paso Water to get into the pond to clean it out.
And it'll be concrete lined, or...
No.
No?
Natural, natural line.
So we're doing the best we can to keep it, obviously, it's not staying natural, but as much as we can.
Thank you.
I know you have the beginning of this, but as far as the timeline, what, do y'all have any kind of projections yet?
For Arroyo 1A, yes. I believe that should start construction in the fall.
And what's the estimated time?
Time frame, 16 months, I believe. Nancy, was it 16 months? For the construction? Or do we... Yeah.
Any more questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the end of item three, and now, but now we go on to item five. Information, discussion, and action, and update on the status of the Mountain River Trail System, including stakeholder and public meetings, trail route options, and decisions, and prioritization of efforts to complete the trail. Hi, Daniel.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. Daniel Lopez from the Capital Improvement Department. Here to provide you an update for the Mountain River Trail project. So the Mountain to River Trail is an east-west multi-use trail linking the Franklin Mountain State Park in northwest El Paso to the Rio Grande in Upper Valley. Our goal is to enhance non-motorized trail access and improve trail connections among diverse land uses, including existing paved trails and systems. Our guiding principles are user experience, constructability, safety, economic benefits, connectivity, wayfinding, cost effectiveness, and maintainability. Our funding is through the 2012 Quality of Life Funds and Stakeholder Contributions. Right now, our trail route alternatives have been identified and evaluated, and we have completed the conceptual design phase. Our improvements will be performed using existing paths and providing connections, filling gaps, and wayfinding to provide a safer route through the Mountain to River Trail. And we also held a stakeholder meeting back in January 30th, 2020, where we presented the final alignment. Our next steps is the preliminary design phase, and that'll be initiated late this month. Once the preliminary design phase has been completed, we will schedule a open house meeting for the public to see where we're at, and also they could provide some suggestions at that meeting. Meanwhile, we're gonna, we have development of land use agreements with the project stakeholders, such as Tex Dot, El Paso Water, Franklin Mountain State Park, and of course, the BNSF Railway, which is ongoing. And lastly, our, it's, we need to finalize the design and of course initiate the improvements for connectivity and wayfinding. And that's it at this point. Thank you.
So design right now?
Yes, sir.
And any, after the community meetings and then comments you received outside of the community meeting, where do we stand now on the, on the design or...
Well, we'll continue with a pre-final design, and also we have final design, and then after that, we'll have to put it through a procurement stage where we will bid it out for construction. And in the construction phase, that's when we will install the wayfinding and do all the improvements.
Okay. Questions, people?
Are you able to, aside from the map that you have, share more details about the design?
Since we're in the conceptual phase, oh, well, we just exited the conceptual phase, we'll have more details throughout the, the future phases of the design.
Where's Trans Mountain relative to most of this? The part it's going across there?
Let me see. It's right, it's it right here. So this is the path down along, I'm sorry, this is Trans Mountain.
Yeah, I was going to say, that can't be Trans Mountain.
That's Trans Mountain.
Okay. It's just, so the trail is north of-
It's the, yes, it's the red line on the north side of Trans Mountain.
The paved trail that's, that's already in existence.
There's a hiking bike currently there.
Along the side.
Where we will, we'll provide a wayfinding through the existing trail.
How do you notify the public of the public meetings?
We coordinate with our public, our public information officers and they, they set up, they have a mailing list and they distribute a, a letter, a notification to those that are on the list.
Via mail?
Hmm, yes. And then, we also have emails as well electronically.
I don't recall hearing about it.
Well, I was going to ask, for those of us interested on getting on that emailing list, to whom should we send a question?
I will, um, I believe we contact Karina, she'll help out.
Okay.
Yeah, planning staff will be notified.
Can you put all of them there?
Yeah, so the distribution includes typically media, different neighborhood associations, and other reviewing departments, so we'll get notified and I'll pass that on to you guys.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the route that you're, that, that was on the map, that's, at this point, that's the route that we're working on?
Yes, it's the approved alignment.
Okay, okay.
Because it kind of goes backwards part of the way. After you get over I-ten. It looks, you go back a little ways.
It's, it goes, you mean downhill from I-ten? It's going through a neighborhood for a ways there. At this point, there really isn't a way to-
To not do that.
Correct.
We don't, we don't need to get too close to Donovan with, with it being a state highway and no good way to make that.
Well, no.
That happen.
Yes.
And Tech Dot, are we anywhere with getting it under I-ten?
At this point, that's, that's the coordination that's going to be, it's ongoing right now. We need to draft up a multi-use agreement. We've already contacted them, we've met with them, and they're willing to help out.
Okay, good.
Any other, any other questions?
Any more questions? I think that's it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. You all have a very good evening.
Thank you, too.
Item six.
Thank you.
Information, discussion, and action, review of the 2007 Open Space Master Plan and options for an update of the plan.
Karina Brazgala with Planning and Inspections. This is primarily a follow-up to last month's item where you guys kind of discussed looking at acquisition and management options for the open space that we are in the process of acquiring or recommended acquisition of. That one was not an action item, so this is basically that as an action item. If you guys have any specific questions about the Open Space Master Plan, I can pull that up and we can go through it. And then I also have some, I mean, for background or as a reminder, the discussion there was pretty much, the Open Space Master Plan was done in 2007. It's a bit outdated in terms of what open space is still available. Other things like ongoing city project corridors, things like the Mountain to River Trail just aren't up to date in that plan. And then, of course, it focuses a lot on how to acquire different land, different options, transfer of development rights, that kind of thing. There's not, there's hardly any mention of what to do once the city has that land as open space, which I know is the primary concern for this board is how are we managing that? How are people able to access that? So if the option is an update, I think staff's recommendation would be that would probably be something we'd be able to do in-house if council directed us to take that action. So that would be, that would be the motion language would be, OSAB would recommend to city council to direct the city manager to have staff work on an update of this plan. And I have that written down if you want to read off of it. That's just, so here's sample language I put together based on the discussions last time. You guys are welcome to kind of amend and fiddle with this depending on what you would specifically like to include. The other option is, of course, if you'd like to, the previous plan was prepared by consultant. The recommendation could also be to have the city manager work with staff on hiring a consultant who would handle the plan, the outreach, all that kind of thing.
What questions do y'all have?
I was supposed to say, questions, comments?
How can we be involved in this update?
So that would be it. So let's say the, once the, if the staff time was approved and the update was in progress, we'd likely be coming to OSAB with updates as well as council if they'd ask, usually they'd get updates on plans. You all would probably be very helpful in the public outreach and coordination portion of that. You know who is out there using the trails, using these open spaces, who might know them. So we definitely have you involved in that. The board would also be on our list of stakeholders, so maybe our typical planning process. You have comments?
Hi, Harrison Plord, Planning and Inspections. On top of that, whether there, whether staff is primarily working on this or there's a consultant, the board could always choose to create a subcommittee that would work hand-in-hand between OSAB meetings with whoever's running the plan. So that's an option as well.
To provide recommendations and stuff?
Yes.
For the consultant or however we?
And those are just, the committees here, I think, are just created by the chair so they don't require additional motions. You could just create master plan subcommittee and appoint members to that.
More questions?
Is this something that we would have to pass today, a motion today?
No, absolutely not. You guys could take some time to think about it. If you'd like to, like I said, work on a formal memo or something like that, that's also maybe more helpful to explain to council exactly what you're looking for.
I guess maybe if, if you all have come to the conclusion that you think that this could be something done internal, perhaps being able to talk to those people that would specifically work on it, or if you've already have people in mind.
Well, it would be, it would be myself, Harrison, and then likely coordinating with the Parks Department. So Mr. Castillo here.
And as, as Karina mentioned, so he comes from direction from, from city management and so it, based on your, on your recommendation. And then we would internally coordinate that. So it could be also a hy, a hybrid in the sense that maybe in the long run, you do want a consultant-led study, but in the meantime, we could update the plan as it is now because it's, it needs updating. And then it allows us to use more recent maps and some, there's a very detailed list of who was involved with the initial plan, in the plan itself. So, so a lot of you may even take a look at that list when you get a chance and we can update that, see who's, who's still active, who's still around the city. And maybe, that would be a good starting point. And then we can do an update and then later on, as funding becomes available, we could do a full-blown study, a more detailed study.
I mean, I think, I think my opinion is when I, you know, I spent a lot of time in the last month reading the plan and it seems to me like there's a, there's a, there's a, you could almost divide it into three sections and they're about the same amount. You have a, you have a third of things that can't happen because a bulldozer has ruined the opportunity to keep it as open space. You have a third of, you have a third of things that have been completed and we should celebrate the fact that there's some successes in there. And then there's still some opportunities to do things. So to me, an update, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to look at as an update as a, much of a long-term solution because so much has changed since that plan was done. And, and the fact that the, that that plan doesn't have a management, you know, aspect to it at all. So, I mean, I think, I feel like I'm comfortable with, with working on an update with an eye toward a, a completely new master plan. And I think even that update has to, part of the update is looking at what, what, what we, would we want to include in a new master plan? How is it different, you know, is, we're not going to just follow the same table of contents that we have in the existing one, but-
No, and it would include-
What's the table, I mean, that's part of what, what, what a, you know, a stopgap
Yeah. No, and certainly an update to the recommendations as well, right? To include more inventory, looking at that. Possibly if we want the city to have, because I know, correct me if I'm wrong, but like the Parks ordinance right now is quite strict on the land that you guys maintain and how that has to be done. And there's not really provisions for-
Correct.
You to consider open space as Parks property.
Correct.
Yeah. Sort of that would be something.
And then there's some other areas too where we coordinate with Paso Water because they have their own, they have their own management plan of some of those areas. And that's something that I think we, we should look at. I know from the community standpoint, particularly in the Mission Valley, people would really like us to do more in terms of wetlands development. I mean, Rio Bosque is very successful, but we have some other portions there along the Playa Drain even near, near like Riverside High School that would be ideal locations for wetland development. They, they, they retain a lot of water and actually have a new interesting water feature, not, not throughout the year, but when there is water, you do have a nice water feature. So maybe expand the area on wetlands as well. Or, or use of some of the areas that exist that have kind of fallen, they just, they're not on the radar screen anymore. Feather Lake is one, like off of North Loop is another, is another example. How do we reactivate places like that?
Could we include something on a, towards a management plan in an update?
That's what we talked about last time is I think we should, and I, I liked what the chair was mentioning is this is what we need going in, in the future. Maybe we could create some kind of outline, you know, as to what that management plan should include. And then we add more detail later on. But that way, we, we, it, it, there's a momentum with keeping this moving forward. Because we don't want someone to say, well, you know, a consultant-based study will cost $250,000 and we don't have the money now. Whenever we have the money, we'll do the study. So in the meantime, while we're looking for that funding, we can do the updates, maybe, maybe, maybe there are appendices to this, to the, to the existing plan and, and we just use that as background information as we start to go for a more detailed, new, a new plan.
But again, that would all have to start with-
With a motion.
A, a motion, a recommendation from this body to council. Yeah, unfortunately, otherwise staff can't work on anything. We have to be directed.
Can you bring your-
Absolutely.
Your proposed-
Yeah. And at least this very first one would be how you would work. So OSAB recommending to city council that directs the city manager to authorize staff to, and then whatever you guys would like us.
So let's take, if you don't mind, we'll just take a minute to study this.
Well, if we have staff working on it, we can get going on it sooner.
Right. But, and part of what I'm, and that's, and that's the idea here, but is this, is this the motion that we want or are there things that we want to add to this?
Do we want to modify this?
Yes, do we want to add or, add or subtract anything from this?
Well, and like I said, the chair or, I mean, anybody else on the board, you can also, if you wanted to prepare some kind of background information, a memorandum to city council to include with the motion, you could also do that, draft that, bring it back to the board for approval.
Okay.
This is very general, obviously.
My only suggestion would be maybe to include connectivity. So Open Space Master Plan, just coming from a conservation point of view, connectivity is what gives value to open space with regard to species populations and water flow and-
I'll add it. This is also for me, if you guys do make this motion, I want to make sure I have the language right.
And be sure, we want to be sure it includes the water utilities, the stormwater stuff too. Because I think as mentioned, that's not in there because that happened about the time this was written. That, that was in 2006.
So, I mean, again, this, the, the, the plan would be recommendations for future action. It wouldn't necessarily be binding, but it would give staff and other stakeholders, right? Guidance. Part of the, obviously, we would coordinate with El Paso Water because of the ten percent dual-purpose funds.
Have to on that.
Yeah, I would just, we would include their information in there. I don't know, I mean, they have their own whole structure, so I would be hesitant to say that anything we propose in the plan would necessarily influence them directly
Another thing I think is important is if, if the, if the existing master plan is still sort of the guiding document, I think it's really hard for anybody who's trying to decide what we're trying to accomplish to, to know where we are. So, so I don't know how we also include in something in here that sort of has a, a status report for what has happened. You know, maybe it's those three things. What opportunities still exist? What opportunities disappeared? In which ones did we accomplish?
Yeah, that'd be your implementation matrix usually in a plan that explains kind of where you've been, how you're going to track what's been accomplished and what's not.
But how, so I don't know how in the motion language, we're saying that, that I think we want to, I think-
Yeah, and this is, and this is where kind of, and this is where kind of the memo might help explain some of that stuff. I will say in general, when you're just looking at a master plan update, it will include all of those things. So you'll do all your background research, the history of the plan, what's going on, updates to the specific sections. This is just things, I was specifically wanting to include the language about meetings and management because that is something that is not currently in the existing master plan.
Do we want to include having a subcommittee of OSAB working with staff?
You guys can just create a subcommittee right now. The chair would just have to say-
But it doesn't have, it doesn't have to be part of a motion.
No, it does not.
Yeah. So we don't have to do that that way.
Yeah, you guys could just make one.
And staff wouldn't say, no, you can't do that and work with us.
No, you guys can create as many subcommittees as you'd like.
And Karina, I have a question for you, so correct me if I'm wrong, but, so this is just, sets in motion that staff is being directed to work on the plan.
So the actual scope of what's going to be included in the update could be a task for
the subcommittee.
And, and you actually, this is, these are the things we want.
This just says, this is, this is our vision of what we would like to see and we need direction from, we're asking direction from city council to direct staff and city manager to direct staff to move forward.
Yeah, you could absolutely leave the motion at, at just an update of the 2007 Open Space Master Plan and then the scope could be figured out later. This is just authorize staff time to help figure this out, so we can get you guys an outline timelines, that kind of thing.
Okay. And just for clarification, if we're going to do a subcommittee, it just has to be smaller than a quorum?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
So three, three people?
Smaller than a quorum, so that, otherwise you'd have to, you'd have a quorum and would have that.
Yeah.
Perhaps work on an update and analysis of the two thousand, and that way it can kind of make sure we get what you're concerned about.
Yeah, like, like an assess, an assessment of the existing plan to see what would need to be updated, to be replaced beyond that. Yeah.
Assessment and update. And I'm sure you, I mean, I have confidence that you would include those matrices like you were talking about, but-
Yeah.
Just so it's clear.
No, that's, that's why the detail is in here too, I know.
Yeah. Where have we cut to and where do we want to go?
Like I said, no action necessary today if you guys would like to sit back and think about this, absolutely fine.
You know, my, my feeling is, is months, you know, months with nothing happening means we don't, we don't get anywhere. So, and, in, in, in a lot of ways, I would rather that we, that we do make a motion today.
Yeah.
And, and I understand that, you know, you're saying that we still have a lot of flexibility in exactly what happens based on what's in here. So I'd be happy to hear if anybody else has anything to, still to add, and then whenever we're past that point, I'd be happy if someone is interested in making this motion.
I just have a question with regard to the memo that you were discussing that we could create. When would we have to do that and, you know, just what would be the details about that?
Again, kind of up to the board, there's no real formal process. Lots of boards and commissions do it slightly differently. If you all trust Mr. Baumgart, he could just draft it and give it to me and I could pass it on to city council. We have had with some more complicated memos and motions, it kind of gets sent out to the board for distribution and gets approved at the following meeting. So in April, you all would have a chance to read that, make any final drafts, that kind of thing. And then that would get passed on to city council.
So you would, we would wait for that memo to accompany the motion before it being presented to city council is what you're saying, or how would that work?
You're asking a tough question. You're asking a tough question. So, again, motions have worked a couple of different ways in the past, sometimes we have passed those on, we've had staff place those on a city council agenda on behalf of the board. Sometimes with the issue like the memo, those get either delivered physically or via email to the district reps, and then we have them, they have to put the motion on the city council agenda themselves. It could be either one of those options. I think since this is one of the major items that the board has purview over, staff would feel comfortable placing this on a city council agenda, in which case, it'd be best if it had backup attached to it, but I won't, I can get you more clarification on that.
Just so we know the timeframe to get it to you, you know?
Yeah. So, how long, after you have that, does it take to get it on the agenda?
Depends. City council posting deadlines are usually the week prior, because this would be involving some of the city council reps. I don't know. I could post it a week before. There would be levels of review there, and it may be postponed or asked to be held, and that would be someone else's. Discretion of council on some of that.
I mean, I'm pretty happy if we move forward on getting the motion done, and then we can work with, with you to see how much backup you need and how quickly, and we can make that happen.
Absolutely.
So, if anybody wants to make a motion?
Do you want to? How would you?
Yes.
If the board would like to include something like a memo that provides a bit more detail and context to the recommendation, I would suggest that whoever on the board is going to write that, do that before you make a motion to make a recommendation, because that should, I think that should really be connected to the recommendation, and it should be clear that the intent is the same. Because I don't, I don't think you want to get into a situation where you've made a motion to recommend something to council that is kind of vague, it's just one sentence, and then one of you is drawing up something that explains it in further detail, and then you get to a point where one board member or somebody says, well, that's not what I thought we were doing. So, if you would like to include a memo some sort along with the recommendation, I just think it would be better to draw that up, bring it back to the board, so you can make the motion with that specifically in mind, just.
Okay, okay.
That's a good point. We have gotten into situations in the past where board members have said, that was not the discussion that led up to this motion, and there's been conflicts between the actual language of something and the board's interpretation.
Okay. Thank you. So, then I can start to work on a, on a backup memo to go with this, look at, trying to discuss this in our, in our next meeting, along with, at that same meeting, potentially passing this motion or revision of that motion at the same time.
So, hold on to this motion.
Yeah. So, if I, if I, okay, so, and, and would, would, I'd be happy to be on a, on a subcommittee then, to work on that memo also, and I can take a couple people to help me. Would anyone else like to be on a subcommittee to, to work on that?
I would, yeah.
I didn't look your way, but they said they could.
Well, I know, and there's only, it's three, right? That could be on a subcommittee?
For right now, it would be three.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay, we have a subcommittee then, that will, will start to talk about this. Okay. What else does anybody want to, any other questions or anything for this going forward? Because I guess we're not going to make any motions. We don't need a motion for a subcommittee, so we'll just figure out how to get to that. Okay, I think that's it for, for this item also.
But we will have this item on next month's agenda.
Yeah, our plan is to have this on the agenda next month, to hopefully pass a.
Hopefully have this memo ready.
Yeah, to hopefully have a memo that we can tweak as needed, and a motion we can tweak as needed, and do them both at the.
And then get it moving.
At the April meeting.
And I'm happy to help coordinate the subcommittee meeting, if you guys would like to use any of the planning meeting rooms or coordinate that, have some staff there maybe for questions.
Yeah, I think that might be, that might be helpful, at least with the first one.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think that's it for item six.
Do we have more?
Item seven's an important item.
We don't have a closed session today.
Yeah, we have nothing for closed session, so we're finished, I just need a motion to adjourn.
What happened, what happened on our?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Pat.
Oh, I was just kidding. We put in that motion to reorder, what, what did we do, our priority list or something?
Can you speak to that?
Did we do something? Are we supposed to talk to our city council rep about which I did?
It's not on the agenda.
So, we can't speak? I can, I'll fill you in, or Karina can fill you in a little bit.
Oh, after the meeting.
I can do it really quickly. I mean, basically, what's happening is that motion has to go to the, oh, I'm gonna do it wrong, BoAC, but it's Bond Oversight Advisory Committee. Since it's gonna be using the QOL bond funds, it will be placed on their April agenda, and that's being coordinated with capital improvements, and then.
Then to city council.
On to city council.
Okay. It struck me, we have this motion.
It's like, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hold favor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Don.